Public School Board and Norfolk City Council to order. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. George for any opening remarks before I order Dr. Boone, any opening remarks before we get started.
Certainly. Good afternoon, and we've been looking forward to the opportunity to come back together again with council to be able to discuss how we're continuing to move Norfolk public schools forward. I'm quite sure you've seen the very good news in terms of our school accreditation. We're delivering on the commitments that we've made to the community and therefore really hoping that the community is beginning to feel confident about the investments that it's making in the schools. And I certainly appreciate working with Doug Smith and his team. Our teams are meeting regularly together as well as the individual department support. So we're appreciative of the opportunity today.
Can I just add that, you know, this is the first of what we expect to be a couple of joint meetings before this calendar year is up. We said we would come together at this time to begin the conversation around funding and then we would come back late November. I think it's what we talked about after we get recommendations from the Educational Planning Committee and then talk about recommendations from that as well. So as far as we know as a board, that's our schedule and I look forward to this meeting and the next one.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Hi, Mayor. Members of the council, members of the school board, certainly proud to be with you all. It's fun to be with Dr. Boone. We will do exactly what y'all think we're gonna do, which is walk you through some presentation on the school funding formula. I think there was a little bit of confusion. This is not a proposed formula. It's just really an opportunity to lay out for you what some of the options will be that we think we'll consider and also give you some of the financial context, kind of where we are as a city and sort of why it's important we think to have the formula in place. That obviously allow you all to have some conversation. You'll see the last slide. We'll actually ask you to do a couple of things between now and the first of the year. And then Mayor, we give the school board an opportunity to leave and then we've got a couple of things, just housekeeping things we need to go through with you all, a holdover item from the retreat and a couple of closed session items that we need to go into with you all. So with that said, I'm gonna ask Catherine Whitesell, who is our newest Deputy City Manager and has been in the role. Catherine, have you been here two weeks, three weeks? This is week three, week four.
This is my first year.
Time flies.
That's right.
And candidly, we're thrilled to have Catherine. One of the things that was appealing about her resume was a lot of experience with working with school board and specifically working with a couple of different school funding formulas. So we think that is a piece of expertise and that's relevant that she brings. As I said, she's gonna walk you through some of our thinking, some of the models that are out there. You'll hear her talk about a constant share model, a modified constant share model, a split growth model. We're gonna tell you that I like simple and so we think the constant share model makes the most sense. It's just, it's easily understood. None of these is necessarily better than the other, but one of the things we like is simplicity and predictability and we think that gets you there, but we'll see. And as I said, then she'll give at the end of that presentation some context for sort of the fiscal constraints that we've got at this point in time and then we'll make a recommendation of some things for you all to allow us to go forward and do over the course of the next 60 days or so. So with that, Catherine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Chairman and members of the school board, City Manager and Superintendent for providing this opportunity to discuss with y'all a possible path forward on school funding. As Mr. Smith said, there's not one answer here and through a long process of talking together, we'll end up with what would be a Norfolk model. So kind of some of the things I'm gonna hit are some revenue sharing formula options, kind of why you would even do one of these, look at the school funding, some revenue sharing options, and then give you a little bit of a hit where we are right now for financial outlook and then leave you with some next steps to kind of get this process moving. So school revenue sharing formulas. Why would you want to do one? The real opportunity here is to lay out a jointly derived procedure to determine school funding that can provide stability to the school system and long-term process to resolve concerns and allow both the city and the school system to focus on the strategic needs of the community. Even though I'm new, I suspect there's some common themes we can all agree with. First, student success is critical to both the school's board's goals and the city council's goals. This is the city's future workforce and they require a good educational foundation. Second, city council, a true retreat, you emphasize the importance of neighborhoods. I think there's a common understanding that schools are integrated into these neighborhoods and when residents speak of Norfolk, they often note the school that they went to and the high school that they graduated from. I know we can all agree that on a host of issues, federal and state funding isn't what it needs to be. This is especially true with school funding where unfunded mandates tend to rule the roost and they always forget to send the check. Finally, there's embedded in the state code a division of labor as it relates to the public school systems across Virginia. This embedded relationship can actually work against achieving some of the goals that you all both have for the school students in the city and that's that the school board has the responsibility for the operation of the school system, but the city council has the responsibility to provide the local funding. So as we discuss a funding strategy, recognition of these common understandings, both at the staff and at the board and council levels, will help kind of guide us going forward. What does an effective formula look like? Some key components of a formula is that both the city council and the school board can agree to it. The policy should provide a base level funding for the school system for better planning and it should lay out a process going forward for a regular review of funding and needs of the system. It should recognize the importance of the school system to its community and to the economic health of the city. And in my experience, it was often important for the school system that the city formally recognize its locally required match under the state's funding strategies and but more than anything, it can provide a process going forward where both bodies can get together and understand the changes and address concerns. Looking at the school system's funding sources, it's the constitutional responsibility of the Commonwealth to provide a public education system. To do this, they've segregated funding for schools into state funding and local funding. There's a complex standards of quality or SOQ funding model that the Commonwealth uses to determine the minimum funding that they'll provide and then the required funding for a school division. That minimum requirement is called the locally required effort. I think it's kind of interesting, a former mayor that I worked with once said that nobody would want their school system funded at the minimum levels that the state funds and that they require the localities. For Norfolk alone, you're providing almost $60 million over that minimum level of funding that's required. School divisions themselves do not have taxing authority. Therefore, all funds are appropriated by the city to the school division. There are two types of appropriation level amounts, methods allowed by the Code of Virginia, a lump sum and a classification structure. Norfolk, like most of the other cities in the Commonwealth, use a lump sum appropriation. Nothing in the formula process or discussions have to change that. In the region, Chesapeake Hampton and Virginia Beach currently all have a revenue sharing model to determine lump sum appropriations for their school systems. Here's a quick snapshot of the school's FY18 operating budget. As you can see, state revenue sources provide over half of their operating support. The city's ongoing revenue support accounts for another 36% for a total combined funding for the school system of 95% of the total operating support. The focus of the revenue sharing model really will be the local ongoing support and that I've highlighted in red over here. The two cents that the council approved for construction, technology and infrastructure related to schools would continue to be provided and it could be inside the formula or outside the formula depending on where we want to go with that. One of the things that we'll talk through and work out as we go through the process of negotiating common formula is what revenues from the city's general fund should be included in any formula policy. This is the city's general fund. It's $857.3 million and it falls really into three or four buckets. Of the amount, $330 million point nine is, comes from state or federal government for specific purposes and generally would not be available to share with the school system through a formula. We've also excluded designated local revenues and other local revenue that's not primarily economic driven such as fines, forfeitures, recovered costs and fees for specific services that the citizens pay for. Those fees go to recoup the cost of delivering that service. So what we end up left with are the revenues that are most impacted by the economy and are under the direct control of the city council. This would allow the city and schools to share in the success of the city and on this chart, it's that $414 million number that's there would be what we would be discussing going forward.
Before 14, go back to that. Would you repeat that?
This number right here, this 413.9, I rounded it off to $414 million. That's what's remaining after you back out. Revenue that's not really related to sharing with the schools, state and federal funding. This is a little bit of designated funding that's in the budget. So it'd be that 413, 414 plus or minus as we talk through the process of the mix of revenues that are in there. Yes, ma'am?
Andrea and then Tommy.
Catherine, the other revenue, did you cover that? I'm sorry, on the top.
Yeah, the other revenue, that's the revenue that is mostly fines and forfeitures, charges for service.
I'm sorry, okay, so the local designated taxes.
Yeah.
That is 6.1.
Yeah, and that's, the majority of that is the two cents for schools.
Okay.
For that CIT funding.
Mr. Smith. Catherine, the $330 million in state funds and there's 6.1. How much is that is money that were required to send to the state and then comes back to us?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna phone a friend. Patricia? Patricia Harris from the Budget Office is my phone a friend for today.
The $330 million consists of state funds that are usually designated for specific purposes like schools, human services and the constitutional office service and that's the bulk of that money there. And then there are some where we're sharing some of the taxes that the state administers, like it's the car rental tax and also the big part of the car tax relief that we give the state.
Isn't payroll taxes?
Payroll taxes. Those would go to the state and be retained by the state.
And none of that ever comes back?
No. Same thing with the federal taxes. It goes to the federal government. I mean, it comes back through other program components, but not directly back to the locality. Anything else on that slide? So looking at the local, the funding that we currently provide to the school system, this is the ongoing local support. That's that two cents that you all provide to the school technology and infrastructure designation. This really would become kind of the baseline look as we move forward with a formula in terms of how it impacts the schools going forward. The city currently pays all the debt service for the school system. This expense has grown to $14.5 million in the 2018 operating budget as a result of building eight new schools over the past decade and it will continue to increase as we continue to issue the debt for the schools that are recently completed and still under construction. The revenue sharing agreement will hopefully address capital improvement needs and related debt service expenditures and we'll talk a little bit more about one possible strategy for that that we could look at as part of the formula discussion. So as Mr. Smith mentioned, in the Hampton Roads region, there's basically three models. The constant share model that Hampton uses, in this model, the school system would receive a constant percentage going forward. What that percentage looks like right now in the 18 budget, the school's percentage of local revenue is 28.5%. A modified constant share, which is kind of the Virginia Beach model, it splits the same $414 million using that figure after recognizing the $62 million that's required by the state for Norfolk to provide to the school system and then the percentage is applied to the remaining revenues that are in the bucket of revenue. The third option that's current in this region is the constant share model and it just provides a split to be determined of any growth in that $414 million number. So if it goes to 418, we'd split the growth in some manner that we would work through.
So that's actually a split.
Split growth model.
Dr. Gabriel.
So my question, so with the different models that you've discussed, do all the localities that you've looked at, which would be Hampton, Chesapeake, are they, do they break down their local revenues the way that you just broke down ours?
For the most part, yes. And there's some nuances within each, whether you include delinquencies in the model, in the bucket of revenues that we would look at, some do, some don't. So there's some minor tweaks that we could talk about as we go forward, but I think at the end of the day, what we're looking for is option D, which would be the Norfolk model. And it may be one of these three or something unique that we come up with together for To give you an example of kind of what we would do as we walk through what ends up being the Norfolk model, we're gonna run through a constant share. This is not a recommendation. It's just a way, it was the easiest one to kind of show you how it might work as we have those conversations going forward. Again, whatever we end up agreeing to will be the Norfolk model. The next several slides will show a comparison of the incremental funding from 2004 to 2018. So we're taking a look back in economic parlance, this is called a sensitivity analysis. We're gonna run a model backwards to see how it compared to what actually happened. So when you look at this slide, 2005 through 2007, the blue bars are what was actually provided to the school system each year and that'll be the same as we go forward in time. And the orange bars are what would have been provided had a constant share model been in place with the percentage that the school system was getting of the total general fund in 2004, which is slightly higher than where we are today. So it was about a 30% split to the schools at that point. A whole lot of things have happened, recession being a big one that has caused that percentage to drop a little. So don't get excited that, you know, if we start tomorrow, you'll see these giant increases in school funding formula. We are pre-recession, we're at the height of the bubble run-up on housing and one of the things that happened as a result of that was we reduced the real estate tax rate from $1.40 in 2005 to $1.27 in 2007 to provide relief to homeowners that were experiencing rapid increases in their real estate taxes. Moving forward in time, 2008 to 2009, the city was experiencing a more moderate growth as we reached the peak of that bubble. Things were starting to slow down. During this time, the housing boom was slowing, but the city council decided to reduce real estate taxes further by another 16 cents from $1.27 to $1.11 in 2008 and 2009. Again, the blue bars are what the school system actually got and what the model would have provided. Moving forward into what ended up being the kind of height of the recession for cities, even though the recession had technically ended a couple of years before, it's really where most cities in the Commonwealth and across the country saw the impact on their housing market in terms of the drop in housing values. So from 2010 to 2013, you can see the impact on the school funding, the school funding that they actually received and what would have happened to the model as it moved forward.
I have a question.
Ms. Graves.
It may be a silly question, but I don't know the answer. Do you all have at the school board, at the school system, a rainy day fund like we do here in the city?
We're not allowed to maintain a rainy day fund.
Okay.
By state law, they have to revert any money that's left over back to local.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's what we were speaking last week and I was saying that maybe we should hold a certain amount of money in the event that they ran into some emergencies. I didn't know they were not allowed to have a rainy day.
I didn't know the answer to that question either because just looking at how much money they would have made in the formula and then how little they would have gotten in the moderate growth, had they had a rainy day fund, it would have been able to offset some of that, but not knowing that they weren't allowed to have that is very helpful.
And some cities, as part of their policy, actually adopt a common understanding of what happens with reversion. So as that fund's reverted, what would you do with it? And that can be worked through the policy as well.
And I will say that the city of Norfolk has really worked in schools over time to discuss how we build that into our budget. Actually, for my first budget here, which was FY16, FY17 budget, that was one of the assumptions we used to balance the budget is that reversion.
And finishing the last five years, during this time, we entered into a period where revenue was growing but much slower than our historical experience would have had. In 2014, the city council actually raised the real estate tax four cents, so it went from $1.11 to $1.15, which is its current rate. Of that amount, two cents is dedicated to the school's technology and construction funding.
So is that yellow what they would have gotten outside the 2% or does that, the two cents rather, or is that inclusive of the two cents?
Outside.
Okay.
And again, as part of the policy, we could talk about how to manage that two cents going forward. So actual Norfolk public school system over the past 15 years resulted in an average year-over-year change of about $2 million. Had the constant share model or some other model, would have given them more like $2.5 million over that same time, year-over-year change on average. So what would it look like if we took that same model structure and moved it forward? Now, we're gonna shift the base year from 2004 to 2018 because we're now going forward in time. We'd want to use the 2018's share of local revenues, which is 28.5, slightly lower than the 30 that had been in place in 2004. And you can see from the graph that if we did this, they would get roughly about $2 million more each year and that's a base that keeps building as it goes up. So you would move from a total local funding of about 118, by 2024, you'd be at 136, assuming revenue projections and everything hold true going forward. I mentioned that we'd like to kind of float an idea that we could talk through as part of the funding formula and that's some kind of a reserve for future capital construction. In the near term, large capital projects remain unlikely given the city's current debt capacity. As part of that, we have built eight new schools, which I think is phenomenal and not many cities in the Commonwealth can say they've done that over the last 10 years. Currently, the city pays all debt service related to the school construction. We propose that we continue to do that for projects that are already underway or in construction and that because we understand that new, large projects is very limited in the near term, we'd want to start structuring kind of a reserve funding strategy to address modernization and maintenance of buildings. So one thing we could do, and again, we'll talk through this, so nothing I'm saying is recommending a strategy, is increase that current percentage that exists in the 28 budget from 20, I mean, yeah, FY18 budget, from the 28.5% split that it is by a quarter of a percent each year so that by the time you get out to 2024, the split would be more in the 30% range. Doing this, we'd set aside that additional money, as you can see by the green bars, into a reserve account to fund debt service. By the time we hit 2024 and that revenue was bringing in about $7 million, we could do between 70 and 80 million in additional debt capacity, assuming interest rates are roughly what they are today. And it certainly would provide some cash balance that we could look at in terms of some short-term needs. Again, part of the conversation that we can have as we go forward with a revenue sharing Taking a quick look at the city's financials, in better, in a nutshell, it's better, but it's still not where it was historically. And we'll focus on some budget drivers. This first group of personnel-related cost, I suspect, is probably common to the school's budget as well as the city's budget. I'm gonna talk to the city's budget. We're gonna talk a little bit about the flip in the school funding from some of the state reductions to the city stepping in and providing support, go a little bit more detail into debt service and some of the way where we at, and then talk, come back and talk a little bit about revenue assessment, growth and any other local taxes that might be part of our conversation. The general fund budget has grown by only 3.6% since our previous peak in 2009. From 2009 to 2011, the budget decreased by more than $40 million or about 5%. This is the fund that the local contribution to schools comes through. As a result, the budget was not structurally balanced from 2011 to 2014. We relied upon significant one-time revenues and carryforward of savings to meet ongoing expenses. This resulted in large reoccurring budget gaps ranging from $36 million in 2011 to $20 million in 2015. I don't want to bring up any bad memories. In 2015, the city did achieve a structurally balanced budget where the revenue, current revenues were meeting current expenses and it's been structurally balanced to today's budget. Looking at compensation, while the budget overall for the general fund grew by 3.6% or about $30 million over the last 10 years, personnel costs have increased by nearly $53 million. This is just city employment, not school employment, so we'd like to see kind of where the schools are in this kind of an analysis. Salary costs alone have increased by 16% or almost $33 million. Healthcare costs have increased by 68% or almost $11.4 million and retirement costs for both the city's retirement system and the VRS system have increased by about $8.5 million. So what does that mean in terms of capacity for our departments? Personnel cost inflation is important when you consider that it's becoming the majority funding stream or cost structure in all of our operating departments. More than half of all city departments have personnel costs that are more than 80% of their total budget and the number of departments with more than 74% of their budget dedicated to personnel has grown in, from 2009 when personnel averaged only 67% of most departments' budgets. Those departments shown in light blue are departments that have budgets over $10 million and Dr. Boone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I suspect the school's budget is also mostly personnel costs, probably, I'm guessing, in the 85% range. So it's challenging for departments to manage structural changes when so much of their budget is tied up in personnel.
And yet, that's our, I mean, we deliver instruction with teachers, so.
Yep.
Quite natural that I was with you.
Yep. Kind of looking at the school budget, over that same period of time from 2009 to 2018, the school's budget has decreased by almost $5 million. This has primarily been a result of the decline in state aid of roughly $24 million. So if you look, this first set of graphs is the budget in 2009, what it is in 2018. Then this center section is the state aid. So they dropped from $214 million to $191 million while at the same time, the city's contribution has grown by almost $13.5 million, partially to make up that shift. Looking at debt service, one of the ways the city has managed to balance its budget going forward is some really great debt management strategies. Debt applicable, let me start over. Over the past 10 years, debt applicable to the city's debt limit has increased by almost $400 million from, oops, go back, one more, from $697 million to just over a billion dollars in total debt that the city's carrying. Keep in mind, this is the amount of debt that's been issued. There's another $300 million in capital projects that have been approved, but the bonds haven't yet been sold. So this number actually would be a little bit higher once those, once the bonds are sold. During this time, debt service paid from the general fund actually has decreased from 74.5 to 65.3. That freed up capacity to use to help get through the recession. The way they did this again is some brilliant debt management. They've refinanced existing debt to take advantage of the lower interest rate market that's been out there for the city of Norfolk and for other cities. They've managed self-supporting debt backed by dedicated fees and revenue and they've used a low-interest line of credit to offset initial capital expenditures. All of that has helped kind of reduce debt service or the mortgage that the city pays on the bonds that it's taken out for capital projects even while taking on more and more debt. However, that strategy's gonna get us now. So this is your capital improvement program, the years that you just adopted. Really, we're gonna be moving into a kind of a maintenance CIP where we're looking at maintaining what we have, not building the new big generational projects, but even with that, even with that strategy, you can see that debt service is gonna rise over the next several years just as we try to, we've refinanced what we can and that unsold $30 million, $300 million is gonna come due. So moving into real estate on the revenue side, it's something we would talk about as part of the formula. The city's real estate assessments. The city's real estate assessments peaked at $19.1 billion in 2010, and the current is only 18.9 billion. So we've seen a decrease of the actual assessed value of property within the city. The annual growth rate for assessments is a little less than 1% at about 0.7% a year on average, and contrast that with long-term growth in real estate, where you were seeing 5.1 to 4.5% range of growth in real estate. The good news, I guess, from the taxpayers' perspective is that even with the last tax increase, they're still paying $168 a year less in real estate taxes than they had paid in 2010. This is your actual real estate assessment growth over the years. You can clearly see the run-up in housing values. You can see the three-years where we saw actual negative growth in our real estate assessment. I'll tell you, my experience is, we saw five years of negative real estate growth before we started to see any kind of recovery. So, good news is, it didn't go for very long. One of the things you did in terms of your debts is those generational projects. I think that's beginning to pay off. In 2018, there was a deliberate attempt to invest in the community so that sales tax, meals, hotel, and other taxes would show some positive growth from an economic increase, and that is working. Again, these are all partially or fully inside the formula pot that we might talk about. The chart on this slide provides a summary of the impact of the information presented on the previous slides. Simply put, revenue's not growing fast enough to keep pace with the cost of maintaining our current level of service that we're providing to residents. We are projecting a budget gap in the upcoming year of over $13 million. Personnel debt costs are growing at a rate that's substantially faster than our total revenue growth. And keep in mind that the expenditures that are projected on this slide are status quo, it's doing today for the next five years, and that means salary increases for employees aren't included in these numbers. Any additional support for the public school system isn't included in these numbers, and any new programs or enhancements to existing programs isn't in those. Those are probably not sustainable assumptions, but it provides you kind of a base understanding of what the concern is. So to summarize, growth in the base expenditures are outpacing revenue even at status quo by over $13 million. The expenditure growth is being driven primarily by personnel cost and really more in the fringe benefit side than in the salary side and debt service cost. The revenues are not growing at their historical levels, and to stay within debt limits as outlined by the city council's financial policies, we're entering into a period of maintenance CIP as we continue to pay for those generational projects, which are providing some return. So, next steps, and this is my final slide. We're looking for a joint resolution from the city council and school board, saying, let's go forth and start doing the deep analytic dive that needs to happen as part of a revenue sharing policy and formula. We'll bring it back to the boards on January, and with some hope to adopt something in time for the next year's budget.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing I would add, in terms of our organization, what we're going through right now is a programmatic budgeting process. We're taking our departments through a very different process than they've been through in the past. We're starting much earlier than we have in the past, and really trying to get down to a department-by-department understanding of every program and what that program costs and what the FTEs are that are associated with it. And it's just, we're going to, as an organization and as a community, we're going to make choices about what's most important to the community. Obviously, education is at the top of that list, but I felt it was important for you all, though, to have not only some sense of what these funding formulas can look like, but also what our financial context is as a community. So with that said, I would open it up for any kind of conversation or questions.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. I guess my question is, where is this coming from, first thing? And October is, might be sooner than we are ready as a council to talk about this. Where is this coming from?
So where is, what, the idea of a formula?
The idea of revenue sharing. Where is that coming from, versus how we've been funding the school district over the years?
So this was feedback we got last spring. Remember, one of my first meetings last year, staff presented to you all a funding formula, asked you to put it in place, and it actually, at that point, was based on average daily membership. And I would just say to you that I believe that is a sort of self-fulfilling cap, if you will, if you say, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to lay it on the number of students, we're going to base it on the number of students. We've got a declining population, you're basically saying, this is the most we're going to ever give you. And so we said it, so I wasn't comfortable bringing that formula through in last year's budget, and didn't feel like we had time at that point to come up to have this conversation. So the idea was, start in the fall, have a substantive conversation, involve the community in the conversation, involve you all in that conversation.
Mr. Jordan?
Just going back to the presentation first, the 28.5% share that's being used in this, hypothetical, is that appropriate to say? So how does the 28.5% that you're using as the basis for Norfolk compare to surrounding cities?
I can tell you. I won't have to. Virginia Beach, it's 31% after the local, but it's, but it was based on a historical look back and trying to get as close to what the school system had actually gotten. So we continued to play with the percentage with the superintendent and with the CFO for the school system to tweak it until we got to the formula was delivering in the year of implementation exactly what pretty much the school system had gotten within half a million dollars of every year. So we were playing, it was a little bit more stable timeframe we were looking at, we didn't have a big recession issue and a big run-up issue in there, but it was a derived formula jointly negotiated. This 28.5% totally represents the current school percentage of the bucket of $414 million.
Right, because in the past, when the manager at the time would come out with recommendations to council, they would show the, some comparison to other divisions, surrounding divisions, seemed like Norfolk was often at the low end of that. So part of my question would be, in terms of the, in terms of the discussion, what if 28.5% as the basis is negative 2 on the number line? And, you know, should we at least try to have a conversation, what would be our zero? And then from zero, talk about where we want to get to if 4, 5, 7 is what we determine is the ultimate goal, but my concern is with the hypothetical. If we start with a 28.5% as the baseline, and that is inadequate, then now we're building everything off of something that starts off with inadequate versus having a conversation around, I think where Mr. Riddick was getting to, how do we first get to the point of where we are on par, and then jump, jumping from there?
The starting point is everything. I think it's what you're saying, so.
Two things, is that percentage, and then what is the mix of revenues? Long time ago, Virginia Beach had a council-imposed formula. It was 51.3% of only seven revenues, so a very limited bucket. They were chosen because they were the fastest-growing at that point, but over time, as we started into recession, where it was realized that that wasn't the best strategy to totally link it to seven fast-growing economy-driven revenues, and the school board and the city council reauthorized a new negotiation.
Dr. Gabriel?
Also, maybe back on what Mr. Jordan is saying, that when we do compare ourselves to Virginia Beach and Chesapeake as far as the percentage of revenue that we're sharing, the difference may not be that different, but Norfolk's need is much different than what Virginia Beach and Chesapeake is. So then that goes into the conversation that the board has been having, equal versus equitable. So.
Yeah, and I think, don't, let's not get too hung up on these numbers. It's really a methodology of using the history to kind of predict where we want to go and what the formula should be set at. As part of the, any type of a discussion about a capital reserve, I mean, I think one of the things we laid out was the possibility of bumping that to try to provide some more money for modernization of school buildings. So I think that's all part of the conversation, and Mr. Smith and Dr. Boone can correct me if I'm misunderstanding something, but I think this was just to kind of get a kickoff process going.
All right. Mr. Smigal, then, Mrs. Doran?
So I just, if council remembers, when we were doing the budget, I presented all of you with actual numbers from the superintendent's report. I did not bring them today, but I, and I don't know if the superintendent's, not Dr. Boone's superintendent, the state superintendent's report has come out yet with the new fiscal dollars, but that report clearly, and with the numbers that I shared with you, showed that Norfolk was well behind other localities with funding the school system. So just taking the percentages out of it, there were other numbers that were there that showed that, which is one of the reasons why, as a council, we committed that extra money this year until we got to this discussion. But it is a valid point that Mr. Jordan brought up, is that, you know, where we are already as a city and doing that, understanding we have fiscal constraints, but we have, for years, the previous city manager used those ADM numbers to drive budget conversations, but really, it didn't matter about ADM, it was that you could compare that with other localities to show that Norfolk was well behind in its percentage based off of our budget with that.
I appreciate the discussion on the formula, because I think it's a good idea to have some predictability moving forward. I think that's what has been lost, basically, in the last few years. We're all kind of left to wonder what's going to happen in March, April, and May, and so with the community. So I think a level-set understanding of what the base is going to be, so that we can predict that and then above and beyond, that's wonderful. So, the incremental funding slide on page 15. When there's low growth during the recession, in a model such as this, is there a failsafe so that you still hold the school system harmless and they don't go backwards, even though the funding may not be there? So let's say you never go below $124 billion.
Yep, we can work that out.
Is that common, though, in the models?
The ones I'm familiar with, it's not, doesn't mean it can't be. I think a lot of the models that are in play today were pre-recession developed, so there may, we may want to create some kind of a failsafe for a recessionary-type environment. Sort of something we could talk and look into.
Good, thank you. I think the review of it for pre, and then during, and then now post-recession is really a good picture, so that we have a good understanding that that could happen well again. Thank you. This is a great presentation.
Dr. Robbins?
I appreciate the conversation also, and I want to make sure that the two boards have a common language, because when we look at how our expenditures are, we have operating expenses and we have capital expenses, and sometimes the conversation melds those together and can be confusing. So I want to make sure that when we move these conversations forward, we're talking the same talk, so that we're comparing apples to apples down the road, because our, because our buildings need a lot of work, and we're terribly underfunded in those areas. As we are underfunded in our operations, we need to figure out a formula that works to meet both those needs.
Just to go with CIP, this council always funded the school system at about $3 million. I think at one point, it was $4 million. And I, I'm trying to remember what happened with it, but I had something to do with the tax increase that was going to the school, for school construction, and I believe at the time, that city manager, there was money that was coming in. Terry, you may remember this, too, there was money that was coming in before we were even paying the debt on the buildings, and we applied that to the school system as part of CIP, but then we ended up reducing the CIP instead of actually building it back up. So when that tax went away, it was called CTI, I think, not, too many, too many initials, I think, it just got held up. And so now, and I said this at the retreat, some of the issues that we see in the schools, we took money away from the school system when it came to maintenance, at $1 million. A million dollars fixes a lot of roofs and HVAC systems, other things, and you take that away, you're doing very little with $2 million. And so, I think, is that, Dr. Boone, is that two-year straight that the, that it's only been $2 million?
I'm phoning my friend now. $2 million this year, and it was three last year.
Okay, yeah. And I think there was some, there were some voodoo numbers that were played around with, with that tax, only for, and then when we had to start paying the debt on the new schools because they came on board, instead of replacing that maintenance money back in, it went to pay off the school debt, which, you know, it is a, it is a city's responsibility to build schools and maintain them. Virginia Municipal League did sponsor a policy this weekend that will ask the state to look at construction costs, because we're not the only locality that is hurting with aging schools and the maintenance costs, and there's some literary funds that apparently the state has taken away over the years, and they are asking for a pilot program to look at ways to do that. So this is a collective agreement from all those cities and towns and counties and the state, saying we need help with school construction.
All right, Dr. Wiggler?
Other than, you know, Paul, I'm interested that you want to know where this came from. I started talking about revenue sharing with Regina. So I feel like we've been talking about this pretty historically for many years, and on my experience on the other side of this, it's just like Courtney is saying, this absolute confusion or insecurity on knowing what you're going to get really troubles both sides of the table on how you make plans. And I feel that first, we need to assure administration and schools that we are in favor of looking at this, and then give them the go-ahead to do the deep study, and then we'll come back and see what that looks like. We can't keep going on like this, as far as I'm concerned. It just is absolute idiocy to have this battle that we have every spring and not giving anybody any ability to make plans.
Mrs. Graves?
I totally agree with you, Terry. I think, I can remember this conversation about revenue sharing, since I've been on council, it's come up periodically, back and forth, but I do think it's unfair, a couple of things I think are unfair. I think it's unfair to drag you guys down to city budget meetings every year to beg for money that you've already asked us for, and I think it's unfair to have residents also have to chime in and teachers have to chime in for raises or, you know, whatever the needs are. I think that's completely unfair. But, and I, and I feel like having a formula helps both parties. You know what your base amount is going to be. If there's, if there's an increase in revenue from whatever the sources are, then you know that you have, you know, you're going to have more money to work with. But you can't even go to the grocery store without knowing how much money you have on your, in your bank account, you know, and you don't know what to put in your basket. So to have you fill a basket not knowing what you're going to get, I think that's completely unfair. So I favor a revenue sharing formula that gives you all the ability to make your budget with the hopeful, the hopes of some potential growth. But I will say this, right now, I don't favor throwing in that two cents that we already allotted for technology. I think that would be on the same lines of the, what the state did with the lottery funds. You know, they gave it, they sold it as lottery that was going to education, and then it all got dumped into the general fund, and now nobody can determine what's what. So I favor having a formula of some sort that all the bodies can agree on, but I'd like to keep that two cents, so.
Okay, Mr. Jordan, I'm sorry. I yield to Dr. Boone.
I just want to, one comment in terms, in relation to what Ms. Graves was saying. That's one of our biggest challenges in human resources as we talk with principals, is that we know we expect attrition through retirements, resignations, terminations, but we're unable to offer contracts at a competitive time with other districts, because I can't oversubscribe the number of contracts based on the number of positions that I have. So that leaves us at the 11th hour, always trying to scramble and offer contracts.
All right. Let me yield to Mr. Riddick, and we go to Ms. McCullough.
I guess my question is, in one of the slides, you saw the dramatic cut in state funding. So a formula like this, formula like this, if you have a dramatic cut in state funding, will we be expected to make that up, or will this absorb a dramatic cut in state funding naturally?
It would not absorb it naturally. So what we're really talking about is kind of the local portion of the funding. That's why it was important for you to see, is what's happened with this, with this state funding. You still have the ability, in unusual circumstances, to make whatever decisions you need to make that spring, but this brings a certain level of predictability of at least what you're going to get from the locality.
But if we can't close that gap, that state gap, so then do we see the newspaper But if we can't close that gap, that state gap, so then do we see the newspaper articles that the city of Norfolk is not funding, you know, education at the level that the school board wants?
I hope, you know, I hope the article you would see is that the state is not funding. Look, I mean, I think this is part of what-
But it all comes back to us.
I hear you, I hear you.
But that doesn't change no matter which way we do this. I mean, we're going to get those, you know, concerns. Catherine was telling me that some of the systems in this region also base their revenues on whether there's an increase in state funding. So that, that, it's tied to that, that if there's an increase in state funding, then the local funding decreases. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't put that in there.
Yeah, and I, I still believe, I said this the other day in one of our informal sessions where that I believe that somehow the city needs to maintain some type of rainy day fund in the event that the school district runs into trouble after doing everything you can do to, to, you know, run the school district, but all of a sudden run into trouble. And I just believe that we need to be able to, you know, to, I said this to Dr. Wibley about a child coming to you, you know, getting extra money, you said something that, you know, that was totally contradictory of that. But I just really believe that we need to be prepared in the event that the district runs into trouble to have some money set aside since they can't have it themselves. And that's not telling them how to spend their money, number one, and it's not reducing what funding we would have. It's just, you know, being prepared for something.
All right, Dr. Boone, and then Ms. McCullough.
And follow-up to both Dr. Wibley and Mr. Riddick, one of the things that I've been troubled by in the two budgets that I presented to the board and ultimately the board has sent to council has been the uncertainty in the state funding in these last two years. A lot has been placed in, a lot hadn't stuck. As a perfect example to that, the state's portion of a mid-year 2% increase for those standards of quality SOQ-funded positions was approximately $1.4 million. That didn't materialize because of the revenue assumptions that the state had in place. As a result, the board and I had conversations around what we would do, and the board's commitment was to keep our employees whole with what we, what had been promised as a raise that year. And so that's important. So we, we had to tighten our belts during the school year. The other thing that, that hopefully council has seen and recognized through the two budgets that I presented, and it's been tough with the board, I mean, we haven't always agreed, but I felt we had to do, to address our structural imbalances, if you will. Kathy talked about the city's period from 11 to 15 or so that the budget was not structurally balanced. We, we still have a $3 million structural imbalance because of one-time funds, but it has been my goal to address all but that $3 million now in terms of some right sizing of positions and everything else as it relates to enrollment. So there have been some, some very tough decisions, and we talk about, you know, the potential for a rainy day fund. Be interesting to see what that concept would look like, what it would entail, and what would be the triggers for accessing those funds. But I think that the danger also in a rainy day fund is the potential that the city doesn't have to do something in the core because we built up a rainy day fund. And so it becomes exactly what you were saying, Ms. Graves, what the state has done with the lottery is that we, 100% of the proceeds were committed to education. We're trying to get back to the 40% that the, had been appropriated, and so the state took away its portion, its direct contribution and substituted or supplanted it with lottery funds, and so that's that shell game.
All right, Mrs. Smigel, then Ms. Passine.
Thank you.
Andrew.
I just had a question on the timing issue. It was already brought up, the challenges that Dr. Boone has in terms of hiring, and I know we have next steps here going forward, but assuming we were to adopt something like this, what would the timeline be for providing that number to the school or the superintendent so you could start making, just out of curiosity?
So we're hoping we'll meet as quickly as this Friday. So we, we normally would be, we would have met yesterday for our monthly meeting, and so let's don't have that meeting, let's wait, see what comes out of Tuesday, and then let's get our groups back together as quickly as we can, so our offices are literally trying to schedule it. So, so it won't be a, hey, here it is February, here's our plan. We're going to start, assuming you all feel like this is a good idea, we're going to start working through what seems to make sense for everybody to bring back as a recommendation to the two bodies.
I'm sorry, so what I meant was, not this year, but if we were to adopt this going forward, what would be the timeframe for the next fiscal year when you would actually have a number?
So then you've got that graph that Catherine showed, that sort of the, you know, this is what Patricia does so well, which is projecting our revenues. And so we'll, we'll go through that process, and we would have the revenue projections that made, is that? Does that matter?
Okay.
You'll have, you'll, we'll have our projections, and we won't know for certain until we get into the, a little deeper into the process, into the budget process, but you'll have a pretty good sense. There you go. This, this one, it's number, I think it's glasses.
It's on the board. It's on the screen.
Seventeen. So you can see, even now, we, and, Mr. Jordan, we're not saying this is the formula, but it is where the formula, you start to see what, what you get some predictability these next few years. That answer when you're, you look like-
The other thing-
I'm all with that. What month is it?
Is that, is that November, or is that April? Is that? I'm just trying to get it first.
The one thing I would suggest is we develop the policy, for this first year, it's going to be kind of a short timeframe. They'll be involved, they'll know what the numbers are going to look like, and definitely by February, we can tell them what, what the answer's going to be. One thing I would suggest is we lay out the policy that'll drive it from their point, that point forward. We lay out regular, when, when Patricia does the forecast revenues, probably sometime in September, we communicate those. When we do an update, because things are, we know more after December, we communicate those so that we keep the schools constantly in a loop of how the revenues are doing, even to the point, and this is something we'll talk through, is at the end of the year, how did they do, and do we do any kind of true-up situation back to the schools because revenues did better or worse, and then we'll, we'll figure out a true-up. So that's, that can be a component as well that some of the formulas have.
And, and just that reminder that by state code, we're required to have a budget to council by April 1st, so that's, we build our budget from March 1st. That's our first, we try to have a budget to the board, and then, so we back it up from that place. So we've been in FY19 planning since we presented last year.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Smigel, then Ms. Passine.
I'll let her speak first because I've already spoken, but I would like to speak after her. So you can go ahead.
Oh, okay.
That's the setup.
It is.
No, I think I should.
Be careful.
Wait on it.
So we've, you know, we've talked a lot about timelines and some numbers and some projections here about what it could look like, but the one thing I feel like we haven't talked about, and we, you know, I haven't heard talked about over the years, is what outcomes we're striving for. Like, what is, as Dr. Robbins has said, our common language? What are our outcomes? What are we hoping to achieve with our schools? Because until we figure that out as a team, I feel like whether you, you know, the, the city were to tell the school what the amount is in October or May, you're going to have teachers, students, you're going to have everybody at your meeting every month, you know, because, because they're, we know what the needs are, and they may change based on the uncertainty of the state funding. So I think, I think we need to have that conversation about what is it that we're hoping to achieve with our schools? Because you can see by the data presented here that the return on investment is there if we invest in, in some of these, some of these things, and we know what our current data shows in terms of school data, that accreditation results, and what schools may need more help than others. We talked about capital funds, we've talked about the operations and teaching and learning, but we have significant needs in terms of wraparound. So that's something that we, I think, seriously need to consider what that is to help our students.
I know, I know Mrs. Smigel is next, but I think that we agreed to allow Dr. Boone to present after the DeJong Richter study to help unpack and answer those questions. So we purposely left those, those subjects out of today's meeting, but glad that you brought them up. But I think, Dr. Boone, we agreed to wait until you were ready to answer those questions, but I'll let you-
Well, two things. Student achievement is paramount. I think we're, we're all in the same space on that. I think where there's value in the shared conversation is how do we get there, and what are the stretch goals that we have for our schools? You know, full accreditation of all schools is the floor. It's, it's not the ceiling. And so when we think about it, that's one place. But one of the other things, let me be clear what the expectations are with educational planning. Unlike a prior educational planning study, we are not driving this one to do program development through that process. This is really about our facilities, given our decline in enrollment, and our current, and perhaps a couple of future program and school focus areas and, and efforts. But it's not driving the entire achievement piece. The school board has adopted this accountability plan. That's the driver around the metrics that they're using, we're using collectively to look at how we are moving the needle in progress across all subgroups and across those areas that make the most sense for, for the board and what we feel the community is expecting from this public education.
All right.
Two, so two, two things. On slide 18, on the bottom, it says potentially increase school maintenance CIP support in the short term. And I, I can't remember the answer from our retreat, but then on slide 19, the 2019 budget is showing a projection of $1.1 million. So that blue bar included the $2 million that we already give for the maintenance, correct? It's, and $2 million, or is that not included?
No. The two cents that you already give and the maintenance funding are outside this. This is actually what would happen to the overall revenue stream going to schools. So the $118 million you give today would grow by 1.1 million if we set up a formula and we started bumping the current percentage or whatever it ends up being by a quarter of a percent. So over time, you dedicate an additional quarter of percent of local revenues to the school system for a capital reserve.
Okay, so the, the 18 slide, back from the other one, that bottom, then that's means that you're going to ask council to potentially put money back in above the $2 million? Is that where you're talking about the potential? Are you looking to take the 1.1?
Don't get hung up on the numbers, okay? Here's why I think that slide you were just looking at is important, is, is we, schools and city, have paid for a lot of big projects. You've taken on a lot of debt. And so we're just, what we've said to you, and I'd say to the school board, is it is going to be difficult for us to spend significant capital money in the next few years, right? And so this, this slide is just a way to build a little bit of a, of a capital reserve that then gets big enough in those next couple of years, and now you've got something that you can, we can borrow against going forward. That's, the numbers are going to be what we, what you all come up with.
The reason why I'm asking that is because, as you guys know, I very, was very sensitive to the Booker T conversation, and, and I said council has to take full responsibility for that happening. We, we put it on the school system, but this is what happens at these schools with maintenance money, that you can't, you're only given $2 million a year, you can't hit every project. The, the emergency things are the things that, I guess, become the priority, I'm assuming, and you, and you're always playing catch-up with that little amount of money, especially with the age of some of these school buildings. And, you know, and Booker T is not the only one. There's tons of schools. We talked, Tyewater Park, we talked about all the other schools out there that are just in such great need of maintenance, and we're just, we're not even chipping the stone at this, I mean, with $2 million. And so I know, I, I'm assuming the DeJong Richter study is also going to point out some major maintenance needs, but I have some major concerns about the short-term maintenance issues that are going on in the school system, and, you know, Booker T was just one school, you know, that people came out and spoke against, but there's, could be more. That could have just started the chain reaction. The second part is about ADM numbers. So it may be, I don't know who can clarify this, but the ADM does not include pre-K3 and pre-K4 numbers, correct? That's, those are not included in that. What percentage of the funding for pre-K3 and 4 is paid for by the state? Is any of that coming out of local funds to also pay for that, or is it 100% paid for out of federal and state grants?
There's a local, local match for federal and state grants, but that's where pre-K comes from.
Okay.
So the, the operation piece, the local piece, is whatever we're required to match, depending on whether it's a federal grant or state grant, and whether it's the VPI, which is the state, Virginia Preschool Initiative is a state grant, VPI plus is the federal grant, and we have been carrying pre-K3, the three-year-olds through Title I for years. Embedded within those, the federal grants is a maintenance of effort piece, and also somewhat with the state. And so it's difficult for us to, unless there's something catastrophic, to fall below a certain threshold because we have to show that we are maintaining, maintaining our effort in, in return for those funds.
And that, that's my concern too, is that while we've showed ADM drop, that's because those, that's what's recorded with the state. We have over, I'm assuming, 30,000 students in the district with, you throw pre-K on there, and then probably your adult learners are not paid for necessarily out of, so when they, when the state funds, they're funding at that ADM, the, the district is still being required to pay part of the money towards the preschool. And so that, that's why I asked for years for Marcus to not include, always throw those ADM numbers in and show a decline in enrollment, because we have pre-K kids that hopefully will be future Norfolk Public School students, and a lot more that can't qualify for a pre-K because they don't meet the state standards that could be students. But the, the district is taking on that extra expense as well on educating where our biggest need is, which is before five, and getting those brains developed before they hit five years old. So, you know, that ADM, if that ever creeps back up, Doug, I'm going to give it to you because I don't think that's fair to ever, you know, use that number when there's a second part of that. And I, and I, I'm aware that pre-K numbers don't get included with staffing because that comes out of that separate, you know, side, and that is probably our biggest need. And another conversation, probably a whole meeting, about the need for additional pre-K, which the city council should be funding to allow even more middle-class families to have access to, to that, that we're not doing now.
So I, I'm curious about that, Tommy. Don't get me wrong, I'm totally in support of funding as much of this preschool as we can, and it looks like one of our gubernatorial candidates is definitely pushing for that too. But I'm curious, Tommy, when you're talking about this, because aren't we still, are we comparing apples to apples? I mean, before, when we had a bigger population of K through 12, we still had preschool then.
But how much, but how much of that money was funded?
So I think what I need to hear is, what is the difference in what we, do you see what I mean? You've got to be able, ADM is going to be important. I mean, we have lost population, there's no question about that, in our K through 12, but we also need to look at what is our population in preschools been, and what is the local contribution of that been to give us the accurate number. So I think to just discount ADM, it probably isn't helpful, but to give us all the information, to me, makes much more sense. Because you're still talking about a decrease in K through 12, and that impacts all of us fiscally certainly.
Well, my response back to that will be what Dr. Gabriel said is, it costs more money to educate a child in Norfolk, so even if the ADM has dropped a little bit, we know that it-
I know that. I'm just saying, we need numbers and we need answers. We can't just talk about generality.
Let me let Ms. Passine finish because she was on to something, and I think that we didn't fully answer your question. Your question was that parents and the city and the community is looking for other outcomes and measurements, and, so please finish your, your thoughts.
Well, thank you. What I was trying to get at is what outcomes we are striving for? What are we trying to achieve with our schools? What do they need? And, you know, as Dr. Boone alluded to, the educational planning study isn't going to get us that answer. So at some point, you know, before we delve into this, I think we need to talk about what it is we're aiming to do because the schools are our anchor to the, to the neighborhood. And we know we have, we're trying to do, you know, things in the neighborhood, but we also have to figure out how the schools fit into that picture. So I think it's a tough conversation, but what is-
It's not a tough conversation, it's a conversation that we've, we've been trying to have about school improvement, and I, if, if the DeJong Richter study is only going to look at maintenance and right sizing of the population and staffing ratios, and then there should be conversations about accreditation and graduation rates and better outcomes, and hopefully-
Well, and respectfully, Mayor, I think it's about lifting the conversation outside of the state's- of the state's accountability system and moving it to, what do we want education to look like in this community? Not being tied to or held or constrained by the state, because as I said, that's the floor. But what do we see envisioned as members of this community around public education, and the role that it will have in this community, both as an economic driver, and as well as changing outcomes for people's lives, you know, the lifelong learning piece?
So, Ms. Graves, then, Ms. Wagner?
The outcome, personally, well, personally, professionally, and as a member of the council, that I would like to see, and as somebody who doesn't have children in anybody's school system. But I listen to people in my line of work who would buy in Norfolk, but they have children, and they want their children to go to what they perceive as a good school district. And where they're getting their information from, you know, we talked about that, the online pieces and things of that nature. But I think the outcome is a better reputation. That's one of the, a better reputation for Norfolk Public Schools, where even people who went to Norfolk Public School, we have a lot of graduates who are proud to be graduates of Norfolk Public Schools, me being one of them, but maybe question whether or not they would send their kids because of the perception of the school. So, your comment on not just the state testing standards, but going past that, is what type of environment do we have in our schools? Do the parents feel, say, sending their children there? Are they getting above and beyond what the state requirement is? And what does that look like? And how do you guys get there? And then, how much more money do you need to get there? Because you can't have, to me, you can't spend more time in the buildings, you can't have longer hours without having additional cost. And that money has to come from somewhere as well. So if we say we want to have this wonderful school district, and we want to have this wonderful school system, then that means that we're, we as a council and as a community, are going to have to put our money where our mouths are. But I would like to get to a place where, when I meet clients who have children, they say to me, "Norfolk is on my top two because the schools are great." That's what I would like to hear consistently.
And, thank you for the commercial first. But secondly, I think we share in that belief system. And a lot of the conversations that the two bodies have are critically important to the perception of the schools. And so, as we debate what our larger vision is for the school district, let's keep in mind that we aren't the ones that are towing the negative baggage with us as we have these discussions. Because one of the things, and you're right, GreatSchools.org misses it completely in terms of the reality piece. But, you know, we have over 30 advanced placement courses offered. I mean, we have a whole list of things. The millions that our students received in scholarships last year that were offered far exceeded many school districts our size, and even some that are larger. And yet, we're working on our marketing, that's for sure. But we, again, need to make sure we lead with that, and not just with what has been a negative history.
So, Ms. Wagner?
You know, I'm just listening to the conversation. Certainly, I think capital improvement is definitely a baseline of what we need. But getting back to outcomes, and I, outcomes in terms of this whole conversation is very important. And not just outcomes in terms of what the state requires, of what accreditation, but outcomes in terms of the needs of all of our students. And I think that as we address and put all of this together, let's make sure that we outline every need of the children. Preschool, special ed, over age for grade, all of those make up success of what becomes a good school system. So, outcomes are very important to me in terms of where we go as a system, and our success as a system.
Okay. So, Mr. Jordan and Dr. Gabriel.
Yeah, I was just going to go back and piggyback off of what recently been said. I'm speaking for myself, not speaking on behalf of the board. But I think when we look at, you know, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, some of the surrounding districts, and what our history has been in Norfolk, I think from about massive resistance to about where we are today, we've been trying to figure out how to deal with the dynamics and the market forces that were associated with desegregation, suburban growth, mortgages and so forth, mortgages being underwritten by the federal government. And so, I think what has occurred in areas and cities where we say that the schools are good, I mean, often, the families and the children make the schools, it wasn't like the neighborhood made the school great. So to me, as part of this, I think we have to continue this conversation, and maybe even look at how do we include it in our resolution? If the goal for the city over the next 25, 50 years is looking at how do we attract millennials, keep millennials, and grow millennials? And if the research is showing that millennials, when they start to have children, then start to leave, then, piggybacking what was just said, what do we have to do to have the public education system in Norfolk be that true anchor and that true cornerstone of a privately diverse community? And then, how do you define it? What does it look like? We know it'll change over time. And then, how do you build and invest or program around it, or whatever's required? I think part of what our struggle has been as a city for some time is, we haven't really had that conversation. It's always been about, at least from my perspective, how do we kind of manage where we are versus chart the path to where we go? So we may talk about, we're the transportation hub, or we're the financial district, or we're the innovative hub. But I don't think we've ever really had that conversation around being the, even with the Lifelong Learning Commission, the lifelong learning hub. So if that is going to be the direction, then I think that really should be what drives all of this. And the formula is just one piece. The formula may show us that we're here right now, but the gap may be much greater. But over time, we have to continue to build that. And so I think we need to have that conversation, and even if we just, in this first part, come up with a couple of places where we agree, and can measure it and define it, you know, you are what you measure, and then move forward with it. But in the absence of that, I think we, I think this is great, and I think we need to go in this direction. But ultimately, we're going to continue to tinker around where we were versus really having a conversation about where do we want to be and how do we get there.
They go hand in hand.
It's almost like, do you build a budget to get the Mercedes, or do you build a budget to get the...
You go.
Exactly. And Tanya hit it right on the nail to say, what is it that we're trying to build towards?
Exactly.
And that's the conversation that these two governing bodies need to have. And then, once we share with Dr. Boone and Mr. Smith, this is what we want, then they go to work and they figure it out. Whether it has to be pulling money from this pot and cheering money with other sources. But that's what we have to determine, because if we don't jointly come together to figure out what this city wants and needs, then this conversation is unnecessary. And how can we have a formula for something that we don't know what the end result is going to be? And so, I think that's where we need to have this conversation. And just to piggyback again on what Mr. Smigle was saying, if your pet peeve is ADM, my pet peeve is SOQ. Because the SOQ doesn't even account for school nurses. It doesn't account for some of our gifted teachers. It doesn't account for many of the folks that are in the building that support the teachers. And one of our professionals in the building had said, you know, there's two jobs in Norfolk Public Schools. There's teachers, and then there's the teacher supporters. And that's what we're trying to build our budget around. And just because we don't have, for example, patients to serve, if our patient population is downsizing, it doesn't mean we pull away an operating room. We still have to have that area functioning. We still, we have, let's say, three children leave, but there's still 27 children left in the room. You still have to maintain the roof, the custodian, the school nurse, and all of that. And so, the school system operates on a much different playing field than a lot of other areas that we're talking about. So, I don't even want to base numbers off of SOQ, because it's unrealistic, and the state has pushed that burden onto us. And very graciously, the city has picked it up to help the children pre-K and other factors. But I would like to see more conversations around what do we share together as our outcomes?
Wants and needs need to merge.
So, we're going to bring into a closed, Ms. Passine, if you'd like to have...
Yeah, I just really wanted to piggyback off of what Dr. Gabriel said, in that I believe that if we set good priorities and determine good outcomes and reach those outcomes incrementally, this declining enrollment conversation will be null and void. Because, you know, we will start to see those three students plus more students come back, and we'll be having a very different kind of conversation. But you're right, you all are right, if we don't have good, we don't set outcomes, then all we're doing is kind of like just throwing money at a problem and hoping we fix it, as opposed to throwing money at a problem and strategically fixing it so that we get what we're, what we want.
So, Mr. Manager, I think that it appears that the revenue sharing formula is a beginning, a start, however, from the conversation. This formula needs to be expanded to include a public education improvement plan or model, shared by...
No.
If you had improvement, you aren't at a stretch goal.
Well, if we're talking about outcomes and shared outcomes and shared visions and policies and priorities, it's moving for improvement.
And I would say that's one of the steps along to the larger place.
That's what I just said.
But improvement limits us to, unfortunately, what the state Board of Education and the State Department's definition has been, and it's low-hanging fruit.
So, if we're talking about sharing revenue, coming up with a model, and this conversation's been primarily about money, 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 which is drive policy. And hopefully, the policy will be that we will have these outcomes, better outcomes, and set priorities and policies that will have the outcomes that, is it more accredited schools, is it more students graduating? Those outcomes, those are the measurements that, you know, that the state has given us, and certainly, we have to live with them. We can't run from them.
So, we use the state measurements as a floor. So, on the school board's side, every week, we have a work session tomorrow.
Well, we have to meet the floor. So, we still have 11 schools that still aren't accredited. And I know that we don't like to talk about, but it's what the, you know, it is one of the measurements, is one of the measurements that the state has placed on us. And certainly, we have to, we have to deal with that. But I think that this conversation is very healthy, and we must continue the conversation, and we will continue to meet. But I want to get to what Ms. Passine has said, that we have to have these outcomes, because the public, taxpayers, the business community, they are counting. And we owe it to our children to give them better choices and better outcomes in our education system. Okay, Mr. Manager?
All right, so we're going to move forward with the action items on that last slide. May I? We still got a few things for you, so...
All right, so we'll break for about five minutes, where we can transition.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor. We've got two items in open and then a couple items for a closed session. And I know that Mr. Dr. wanted to give you an update on some of the work that he's been looking at for electronic voting and other things. So turn it over to him.
Thanks. I'd like to ask, Ms. McCullough, if you would like to offer some intro comments.
Sure. So one of the things that I asked about early on coming to council was providing more transparency to the public and making it easier for constituents and others to figure out how we voted on something, find out history of information, et cetera. And I found the system that we had to, there were a lot of opportunities to improve it, let's put it that way. And so I looked around at some of the other cities, surrounding cities as well as around the country, trying to find out some best practices. And I started reaching out to some of the vendors and then hit those vendors and touched with rec to identify maybe some opportunities for us to come into 2017 in terms of our technology.
And so from there, we developed, in our departmental team, to take a look at this new technology. And what it does is it provides a more comprehensive approach rather than just a sole e-voting solution. And in essence, it automates the agenda process on how council packets and agendas are composed, how the video works into the, the system as well. It's also provides a package that does the minutes. It has a package for boards and commissions, which from our perspective, we're working off of a software solution for boards and commissions. That was a proprietary design of the city done by a programmer who no longer works for the city. And it, and it really, it's so old that it can no longer be supported. And so the board and commission component would be very important for managing that. It, it, when, when someone goes to search for a council meeting, you get the agenda, the supporting materials, the minutes, the video, all in one line where you just go to one place to access that. And, and that's an improvement as well. The voting, you would vote using, rather than from a stationary system. And so we have this team, DeSight does it too, City of Hampton in August, little over a month ago. And I think to a person, everyone liked what they saw when we saw it in action and the, a live example. And if it would be your pleasure, I think I would recommend that we pursue that. What, once we complete the procurement, if you're supportive of this, the implementation would be four to five months, once the procurement is done, because templates have to be created, digital templates, that correspond to the way that we do business. Every, every city does business differently and we're no different. And so the, the templates for the automation would be customized to the way that office does business.
When you say...
Mr. Riddick and Ms. Grace.
Cost.
The cost will be approximately $140,000.
And so maintenance of this is not an ongoing thing, but 140, is that...
There would be an annual fee that you pay to, to, to the company. Everything is kept in the cloud. And that, that also includes system support, training for ongoing expenses.
And what is the annual fee?
$70,000.
A year?
Seven thousand?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy?
Seventeen thousand. So 140, 140 and then 17,000, seven zero thousand annually. Okay.
As opposed to...
I forgot what my other question was.
Yes or no?
Mr. Riddick and Ms. McCullough.
So we pay seven, we pay all of this as opposed to doing what we're doing there? That's, that's wild.
How does that factor into, hold on Andrea, how does that factor into other licensing fees that we pay for other software on an annual basis? Because on its face value, $70,000 a year may sound like a lot, but if we have other licensing fees that we pay that are 100, 120, 200, I mean, how does it, where is it in the spectrum of licensing fees?
That, I'm not familiar with that. Would be an IT.
And also the scale.
I'll get that, I'll get kind of a comprehensive list of what else is operating in that price range and we'll get it back to you.
Okay. Just because I know we pay licensing fees on a lot of things. So if it's at the bottom, then, you know, there's, it sounds like a big number, but when put into perspective, and that's what I would like is some perspective of the number before we, and when you say, I do remember what my question is now. When you say "we" to a T like it, whose "we"?
It was a team of IT staff, the, the communications, the folks that operate the television station, city manager's office, and staff from our department.
Okay. Ms. McCullough. Sorry, Ms.
Could I just say one other thing? Another feature of this is that it's applicable to other bodies such as the planning commission. It would also have other applications in the city for document management.
So let me, let me set this up. So here's where we are now. If you're a citizen and you want, and you want to find out about how we voted on bike lanes, for example, you have to know the date on which we voted on that bike lane issue. And you have to find the minutes of that meeting. And then you have to pull up a PDF and you have to scan it.
We're antiquated. This is where we are now.
We're extraordinarily antiquated. Now, in this capacity, you could have a Google search bar, you put it bike lanes, it has all the dates going forward. I don't know that we would be able to retroactively look at this. We might be able to scan some documents.
You can go back. Yes.
So, but you could go in, find out every time during which we discuss this, it would code it to the video exactly when it was discussed during our council meetings and provide all the supporting documentation as well. It also provides the e-voting element. We could use our iPads. There's a failsafe to have paper as well. Also, for all the people who come to sign up to speak at our meetings, it would, we could put them on a tablet outside, they input their name, and up on our screens, their name comes up when they come up to speak, and there'd be a three minute timer on the screen that they could see, see the countdown as well.
And they could probably sign up online too, right?
I don't know. I don't know if you could sign up online or you'd have to sign up on the tablet before, but it could probably do something along those. I, I would just say that this is something that is a pretty universal package that a lot of other municipalities, much smaller than ours even, are utilizing. And this is a company that, as I understand it, is, it's pretty standard in the space. So I know it sounds like a lot, but what it is, is providing a lot more information out to citizens and make it easier to interact with the city and our government. So I'm obviously a huge fan of it. I think we need to go in this direction.
Okay.
I like the idea. I mean, I really do. And I get the dollar figure, it sounds like a lot. But when it comes to people being able to access information, it is difficult to get information if you don't put in the exact search word, if you don't put in, if you don't know what you're looking for, there's not really a great fuzzy search, if there is one at all. And so from, and, and the document management piece of it, I like that. I also like that we could use it for planning commission or other commissions that meet on a regular basis to help citizens to, to be able to, and, and help not only just our existing citizens, but the millennials that we, excuse me, are welcoming into our city who are very digitally driven. And I mean, it's just the way of the, it's just the way of the world. It, it, you know, looking up stuff on a PDF is just really old. So I, I like it. Sorry.
Mr. Thomas.
I totally agree with the problem. I need more information on the solution. Can you send us a website, a YouTube video or something to show us more? I mean, Andrea's done a fairly good job explaining what it does today. It would be very helpful for you to see.
They have, they have a lot of great case studies. You can see what other cities are doing, how they're utilizing the technology. It's very informative and it'll make a lot of sense. I happened to sit in on the meeting when they came presented as well, but.
So if they can't make it clear to us, that is definitely a red flag.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Mr. Smigel.
And we're sure this is the only company that does it at this level. I mean, we've, we've looked at another company and had a web seminar from another company. I, I think this package does everything that we needed to do. Because, I mean, we, we have 30 different companies that do city manager searches. So I'm just wondering if we, we've looked outside, particularly when it comes to cost, and this company may just have a market. So they charge a little bit more because they know that there's localities. I think VML may be a great resource for finding out if there's other companies that are out there that do this kind of stuff and what other localities are using. I love the idea. Don't get me wrong. But the cost of it at this point just kind of pushes me away from it. So...
So we originally talked about e-voting software program, which is hardware, right? You just tap the microphone. And I think that was about 60 or 70,000.
Right.
You're adding to this maybe...
It's the ongoing cost that's the issue with me.
Oh, understood. And that's, and that's a software, that's a software licensing issue.
But that's why I asked for where is it in the spectrum, to just throw a number out there. It's like, you know, saying buying a car is $40,000. Well, is that the baseline model or is that the souped up version? What are we getting and where, you know, so that's why I asked for perspective.
So, Carter, would we have to do an RFP?
We have to do a procurement. And whether it's RFP or request for a bid, we'd work through that and do it as smartly as possible.
So, Mr. Fishfield, I'm sorry. They're on the VITA contract. So we can, as I understand it from a procurement standpoint, it's, we could just use the state contract for that.
Right. That's commonly called piggybacking if the procurement has been done already.
Because they're going to see it throughout the state. Right.
So you wouldn't go out and find, you wouldn't open it up to other vendors? I mean, you just pick this particular company?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying in this case, you don't have to. I think rec's already done some research on a couple of various e-voting software packages. He'd already brought it to us as well, some, another vendor.
I'd like to see who else is out there. Yeah. If, if, you know, this is what the council decides it wants to do. I just don't, you know, this, you know, it could be some, some, some woman owned minority firm out there could do the same thing, you know?
One of the things that is impressive about this is their understanding of the municipal space and having background there and having, it's not just coding something, it's having understanding of the actual business sector as well. So...
I mean, you'd be surprised, you'd be surprised who knows what.
As a recovering woman, I, I appreciate where you're going.
Yeah, but you'd be surprised who knows what. And so these, you know, you'd be surprised what companies know what. And I just, you know, think that it needs to be open up, you know, it's not so source.
I'm appreciative of looking for other companies, but I'm also thinking back that it was approximately two years ago that I brought this up. And it's time to move ahead on this. So if we're going to do... So if we're going to do, you know, looking around, I'm hoping we've got a timeline that is quite condensed, and I'm hoping procurement has not been in our normal timeframe, and we can move ahead on this. So I'm hoping to push a button and vote before July 1.
Not to mention, we asked Breck to do the research, and Breck has done the research, and he's brought back the results of his research. So for us to say, well, we asked you to do it, now you did it, and you brought it back, and now we don't think you know what you're talking about, I think it's a little insulting to Breck, but that's just my view.
I mean, in one way, we're saying it's insulting.
We asked him to do this.
I know, but he brought it back to us. How do we know this is the best company?
Because if we wanted to take it on ourselves, then we would have.
Is this the best company for Breck?
But we asked Breck to do that.
You know, do you believe this is the best company?
Of what I've seen.
He's only seen two.
And you could probably have your cake and eat it too, and have information about other companies. And if this is the best one, then you've got the state contract to piggyback on. So if you wanted to, you could get some more information, and then determine whether to piggyback or to put it through a procurement process. Maybe you could, maybe that would satisfy both your goals.
Well, I mean, unlike, not unlike other, you know, when we are looking for development of land, et cetera, and we open it up to others to take a look at, you know, other options. I don't have a problem doing that, but I think we do it in a timeframe that is, you know, we say, here's 30 days. Anybody else who's interested, please let us know. In the meantime, I think, I know that they have all these case studies that we could provide to the council to show you a little bit more of what the bells and whistles are. I mean, we need to be good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, I get it. We understand that, but we also need to be more transparent, and we need to be, we need a technology that is appropriate to 2017.
And 18, and 19, and 20, and 21.
I don't think anybody's arguing against that. I think their only arguing is that this is the best way to get to that transparency.
Sure.
And so I'm okay with that, but it's got to be done really quickly.
You want a timeline, Terry?
Yeah. Well, I'm teasing about that. But, you know, at some point, we've got to start making some decisions and moving ahead. If we feel that this is important, let's go.
Okay, Lauren.
Thank you, Breck, for doing this.
I'll just say again, and push back a little bit on Dr. Whibley. I absolutely see the problem, I'm concerned that this is a very expensive solution, and I haven't seen the solution. I can't say today whether I'm ready to move forward or not move forward. I'd like to see it, and we need the benefit of looking at it first. I'll just say, send it to us, and then maybe we can talk more about it. And not talk more about it three months from now, we'll talk more about it maybe next.
This might be a good place where a committee structure.
Gee, you think?
So just, I think y'all heard this, but just say it out loud, there's 60 budgeted for whatever you do this year, so anything you do over the last 60,000 was budgeted. So if we get into the bigger number, we're going to have money.
Seventy thousand dollars, and then Angela's at the right. Seventy thousand dollars, the scope and scale compared to other IT, other software, other purchasing or licensing agreements that we had, are based on the capacity, not only for our council, but for other boards, commissions, and authorities that may use this product. But we need to look at the capacity and scope, as a scale, and it's a large purchase, and the continued maintenance, I mean, at 70,000 dollars, that's this year, or that will increase and increase and increase.
This year, it's number one?
Seventy thousand.
This year would be the big slide.
It'd be the big slide, then 70.
And that 70, of course, will change. But in any case, thank you very much, a great report. Mr. Manager.
Right, the other item was Councilwoman McClellan and Councilman Smigel, and Alan Boe, I know I've been following up on some boards and commissions, worked from the retreat, and wanted to share that with you all this evening.
So Tommy, you ready?
Sure.
Ready to help me with this presentation? So Tommy, Alan, and I met, and we've gone through, we're providing some recommendations and some further follow-up as well. I don't, do I need to go up and speak?
I was just going to bring in the clicker. I'll click. It'll be fun. I'm going to see Andrea up.
It's going in reverse.
I had to do it at our meeting the other day, I was the clicker.
So the first thing we did was we looked at the current list of boards, commissions, and authorities. You know, some of them, many of them are, by statute, we have to maintain. So those are off the list. We looked at the rest of them. And this was a list of commissions or boards that we thought we could either sunset or possibly combine with another current organization. The Civic Facilities Commission, we recommended sunsetting. I understand that they don't meet that frequently at this point. They were created prior to the institution of the seven venues organizations. They had a purpose at that point, and not to say that they aren't smart, wonderful, dedicated civic volunteers, but I think we have that institutionalized, or rather, as part of the city management staff now. The Tree Commission, don't want to discount them, but we think that organizing them with another staff-led or staff-supported group, such as ARPCE or the Environmental Commission, might be something that we want to consider. Health Services Commission, also, I don't believe meets on a regular basis. We're looking at maybe sunsetting that. Naval Station Norfolk, Centennial, we're getting through that, that was a one-time. Legends Hall of Fame, it's been recommended that we sunset that. And then the Recreation Commission.
Go back to the Legends Hall of Fame. You say it's been recommended. How has it been recommended about?
I don't, I didn't, that was more of a decision.
Alan, do you want to?
No, we would just sort of, not sunset it, but just sort of, just hide it until we wanted to bring it up again. I don't use the word "hide."
Put it on an as-needed basis, is that what you're saying?
It'd be more of an ad hoc.
We don't need folks every year.
And I do think there's an error on there. I think it's supposed to be Civil Service Commission, is that right, Alan? Was it the civic?
No, that's Civic Facility. I'm kind of surprised, because that's been a very active committee.
They meet monthly, but they just look at financials, really. This, we were based on the recommendation from the manager's office in 2013.
Right.
They then also recommend.
And the last one was to align it more with what the department does, and because of possibly moving the Tree Commission, our Recreation Parks and Open Spaces, what that department's called, and the commission is called the Recreation Commission, but they actually do more than just recreation. They do talk about park issues, they do landscaping, they cover all of that part of it, so they'd just align them with that.
And the City Arborist is under the ARPCE board as well.
Now, one of the things that I mentioned to the manager, I don't know if I mentioned to anybody else, I think we need to separate, we need a Norfolk Recreation Bureau, and we need a Parks and Forest, Parks and Forest, and Cemeteries, Energy Schools, and whatever. I think when you cram all of that into one budget, we're not getting the results that we're looking for in Recreation, or either in terms of our street appeal, or curb appeal, is what you, as I would call it.
We also would recommend considering adding a few. The Human Rights Commission, and there are some best practices in other cities that we could look at there. The idea being it would, it could include civil rights, it could include LGBT rights, it could include women's rights, et cetera. So, you know, we are very, one of the things we talked about during our retreat was the fact that we are an inclusive community, and a community that welcomes all, and I think this would be important to highlight that. One of my favorites, a Technology Advisory Board. Now, it might be a group that would look at what we've just talked about, e-voting and legislative software, and make some recommendations there. Help us look at our website and user interface with regards to that. Help us look at some of the small cell technology, et cetera. And then, while I know we have an Economic Development Authority, we thought it might be good to look at a Small Business Advisory Board, and have specific membership that would be representative of the hospitality industry, our small restaurants, our retailers, et cetera, to provide some feedback on zoning codes, as well as what they need from our Economic Development Authority.
And what would make it easier for a small business to establish in Norfolk? Because we do get feedback sometimes on, sometimes it's difficult to work through the process. So this board, and it could be something that sunsets as well, if we get to the point that we have a lot of small businesses coming in. But we just feel like Economic Development Authority focuses on the big items, but there's nothing there to help with guidance on smaller.
I had a Small Business Advisory Board for several years that met, and it was a very effective group, and sunsetted nicely. They were a group that came up with things, principally working with development, but also with planning, and they came up with some very concrete examples. It was probably one of the most efficient boards I've ever worked in.
Was it a ward thing?
It was a group that we just got together, and representatives from small businesses. We met with the development and planning, and came up with recommendations for our website, and web recommendations for having an ombudsman that would work people. So it was the idea of retaining and also bringing in new businesses. So a lot of the things we learned from that, you could maybe do with that. I'm not sure you need to have one ongoing, but.
I've heard a lot of comments about the special exception process. I know we approved it as well. We're going to talk a little bit about what the roles of the boards and commissions are, and maybe create some responsibilities, which I think are a long one, what you're talking about. We do recognize we need to go through and understand the bylaws, terms of service, number of members, each of these. We get input from the current chairs, as well as just look at the code currently, where it stands, and make things more uniform. And also, there are some specific industry sectors or geographic requirements, or there may or may not be, and we need to look at that. So, for example, in the Small Business Advisory Board, do we want to have, you know, two restaurants, two retailers, two, whatever that is? But just look at all of those, and ensure that we have the appropriate professional and industry background information for all of our boards and commissions.
And there are some boards and commissions that it makes it difficult for us to appoint because of the fact that they categorize it, for example, Environmental Commission has, almost every single one of those positions has categories. Is that even necessary anymore, when there's a need to just put good people on the Environmental Commission? Does it have to be somebody who's related to industry, because it was one of the positions that's on there?
So we talked about the need for more outreach to allow people to understand that we have boards and commissions, and we're trying to get them to apply. I mean, the fact of the matter is, a lot of, if you look at our boards and commission members, they tend to be a certain age and come from a certain part of the city. And we need to ensure that we diversify those. So how do we effectively get out and let folks know? So Alan's working with our marketing department to create a YouTube video. We need more presence on our website and social media. We talked about a "Help Wanted" that's posted every quarter. We need to make sure that we're working with neighborhood development to work with the civic leagues, as well as professional organizations like Lead Hampton Roads and Civic, working with our faith-based community. And again, we really need to increase the diversity of our boards. They need to represent Norfolk, if they're going to be providing an advisory capacity.
You and I could star in the YouTube video.
There we go. So one of the things that some of our sister cities.
I'm younger than she is.
Terry's got on a billboard.
So.
She's got an agent.
So one of the things. Moving forward, one of the things that some of our sister cities do in this application process is they actually collect data on a voluntary basis, on age and ethnic background, because it's, you can't, you can't, what is it, you can't measure what you don't measure? What did you say earlier?
Don't know what you don't know.
You don't know what you don't know. So we think we need to start doing that as well, and this is important. A lot of folks will apply for these various boards and commissions, and they don't even know when they meet, and they may not be able to meet at a 4:00 meeting, or a 2:30 meeting, or an evening meeting, so we need to make sure that they confirm their ability to attend the meetings on the application. We also recommend codifying this, making sure that we are discussing this and the voting on the vacancies every quarter. And I would recommend, Tommy and I recommended the first business meeting of the quarter. And as importantly, one month prior to that, ensuring that the clerk's office provides what those vacancies will be, what the current, who the current applicants are, so that it gives us a month to go out and effectively recruit ourselves. Not recruit ourselves, recruit. And then we just go through the code itself. It just needs, the legalese, I think, needs to be updated as well. So just go and do that. Martin?
Quick question, and maybe you're going to do this. Did y'all discuss how that information should be shared with us? I find the way we perceive it now, with a ton of folders and a ton of PDFs, to be more than slightly cumbersome.
We did discuss it. I find, I have the same comment, and what I will tell you is that the software package that Breck is looking at has a boards and commission piece that would allow us to access that information a lot more easily. And there's some case studies on that that we can show you as well. I agree, it's very difficult to open up PDF after PDF after PDF resumes.
So if somebody applied online, made, so let's say we had the software, somebody applied online, would it automatically go to our file for whatever commission or board that they applied to, and maybe we get a notification, or would it go to the clerk's office, and then he could then send it out, kind of like a all-council or whatever, you know, based on how or where the system was set up? How do we know how that would work, or is that kind of like the general gist of how that might work?
It's how you said, how they set up the notifications, as I understand, is that correct?
Parameters that is given.
Okay.
I think you would log in, right? There's probably a login that we would log in and be able to view.
It should be, yes, you should be able to do that.
Dr. Whibley?
Alan and Breck, does clerk's office have the capacity to do all this?
I think with, I think so. I think with the, if we're talking about the software package application for the agenda, I think that it, yes, because it's a distributed thing, every department will be trained and had input to the agenda, so it's just automated that. The boards and commissions piece, it'll be a data creation process into that, to switch it over from one system to another. I think once all that's done, then it's imminently manageable. The other items in here can just be ticked off and looked at, what kinds of changes should be made, if the codify and when the appointments are done. Maybe that could just be an amendment to the resolution that was adopted 2010 that just set out the term limits are, it actually doesn't go in the city code, but it's a policy of the council that is enacted by a resolution. So I think I'm comfortable with it, yes, man.
So I can miss.
Yeah, I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but I don't trust Tommy and Andrea to go out and come back and bring us all of this, you know? I think we need to continue to talk about it. I don't know, we had a meeting over a six-pack of beer, what? You know, but I mean, you know, I just, just don't, I just don't trust, you know, it's not, I just don't trust to try to thrust this down. You constantly use the term geographic versus demographic. Now, when this council was, I guess went into the ward system back in '92, we tried to get representatives of those boards and commissions that represented the communities that were represented by the individuals on council. We also tried to make the demographics a little better. Years ago, it was just totally a lily-white system. We were successful in creating, we were successful in creating a little bit more parity as far as the boards are concerned. But I've noticed recently that we got away from that. The Airport Authority now does not have the demographics that we had in the past and had looked forward to. And so, you know, I'm going to be the stick in the mud, I'm going to say that.
So I think we've set, Mr. Rick, I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand, what is it that you think we should, what we're missing here?
Now, you go back.
The last bullet point, need to increase diversity in all boards. Demographics are age, ethnicity, professional backgrounds, geography, that is.
With me, demographic is race.
That's ethnicity, that is, it's in there.
Yeah, well, that ethnicity, we lost on the Airport Authority. You know, we had an African-American candidate, but we lost that candidate because it was, you know, some other ethnicity.
So I think we're talking about the same thing. I think you and I are agreeing on this one.
Yeah, and that go back to the geographic.
And this, this is the slide.
Yeah, it's the same, it's that last slide.
The last point.
The last point.
So what are you talking about geographic? Are you talking about ward representation, or what?
Well, I mean, for example, on the Architectural Review Board, we don't have anybody represented from Oceanview, which has been an issue that Tommy's had for a while. Yet we're having these big discussions about coastal communities.
these big discussions about coastal communities and ensuring that we have better representation throughout the entire city.
Yeah, well, if that's the case, Tom, I've never heard of it before. You haven't ever brought anybody. I'm sure we would have been supporters of somebody from Oceanview.
I did bring somebody last time, and you guys shot her down.
Who was that?
Well, it might just be a-
I don't want to say it publicly because it's a personnel thing, but.
So, at any rate, so, I mean, I think, I just wanted to make sure that, yes, we have, we have that. And we also, the other part of the puzzle is, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be incumbent only on the council members. We need to utilize the civic leagues, the professional organizations, the faith-based community, and make sure people know that the opportunity exists. Half of the, half of the challenge is, if the applications aren't there, how do we, the applicant pool is very limited, very limited. And so, we need to ensure more people are actually applying.
So, one of the things that Andrea and Alan and I discussed is, and I hope everybody agrees with us, we want to get a little bit away from the surprise of board appointments are coming up, that we haven't had the opportunity to really look at everything in full, who the candidates are, and that we don't end up in a meeting in which we're saying, well, I think so-and-so would be interested in being on the board, let me call them up and I'll find out. And then, we call Breck and Alan and say, no, they said they couldn't do it, and then we go back to it, we're waiting another four months for, to fill that seat on there. But to try to increase our pool of candidates, but also set a few more parameters, because we've been pretty good as a council. I think a couple of years ago, we talked as a council, particularly about the geographic aspect of it, but this puts in some more parameters to allow to increase that applicant pool and create a more diverse pool, but given us the opportunity to actually know who the candidates are before we just appoint them.
And the idea was, we, Tommy and I just set some initial things up so that we, bringing it out to all of us is exactly what we're doing here.
We'll go back to civic facilities.
And that's just-
That's our discussion.
Yeah.
That recommendation-
So, all these sunsets, we need to have this total discussion with Mamie's here and everybody's here, as opposed to, you know, you saying, well, I don't believe that we need that board, you know?
We agree to.
No, yeah, I agree completely.
Ms. Graves was waiting.
I, I like this idea of condensing, combining. We have a lot of boards, some may be necessary and some maybe not. I also like the idea of making it easier for us to let people know about boards. I don't think people know enough about boards and commissions and how to apply for them, because our website is not the easiest to be able to tell somebody, go to www.norfolk.gov/whatever and here's the application, or here's the various boards and commissions. And so, nobody's going to go walking around neighborhoods with a piece of paper saying, here are the boards and commissions, do you want to sign up? So, I think that the YouTube video makes it very easy for social media purposes and for emailing out to civic leagues. I think that the links make it easy, and I mean, it's just, it's got to be more user-friendly, especially if we want to get younger people involved. The sign, if the signup process is hard, they're like, well, good lord, what's the rest of it going to be like? It's going to be like pulling teeth without novocaine. So, I think, you know, I mean, what's needed and what's not, I mean, that's a discussion that we can all have, but to piggyback off of something you said, this is kind of how committee works. You all come up, or a committee comes up with an idea, recommendations, they bring it to the rest of the council, the council says yes or no, or make some tweaks or whatever, the committee goes back, saws it and hacks it down, and that's how it works. And this is a great example of it. Kudos.
Also, we, this is what we asked for at retreats. We all came together and said, these are important issues, and Tommy and Andrea volunteered to do it, and we were all thankful that they did.
And so, we did-
I will say one thing about this. We have talked for 12 years about having quarterly agendas that have commissions on it. And for 12 years, we've tried really hard to do it, and we haven't done it. And so, something has to change, and it's us that have to, and that means we have to read those lists ahead of time. We have to be prepared, we have to be prepared to bring new people in. We cannot have that issue where all of a sudden we talk about it and everybody goes, oh, golly gee, I hadn't thought about this. Let me talk to somebody. So, if we all are sitting here, and I think we are, that we want this to change, then each one of us has to take this on as a responsibility and be prepared and to put it on the first part of the agenda, so it gets done.
So, this segues right into the last part of our presentation, which is how we can fix all of this, is by having a liaison structure. And so, if there, we create a liaison structure, each council member, it's actually a little bit higher than two to three groups if we keep some of the boards or commissions and we add some, but we would like to ask everybody, I have a handout for you, the circle, which ones you'd be interested in. You do not have to attend any of the meetings, so you can if you want to, but you introduce yourself to the Board or Commission Authority Chair, and once you start establishing those relationships, that if you know somebody's going to be coming off the board, I'm going to get back to that. If you know somebody is coming up that's expiring, you'll know that, because you've been talking with the board chair or you are assigned to that. So, that helps you with understanding that we need more applicants to replace them. So, these are just some of the expectations that we want to have with all the boards and commissions. I'll go back real quick to, Andrew and Alan brought up a really great idea, which is to have a recognition event in January for all of our board and commissioners, authority members, that they don't feel appreciated, probably as much as we want them to. So, having an event where they're invited and we recognize them for their contribution to our city will help also create some of that synergy and let them know that just they're appreciated. And Alan has already started actually working on something to happen in January, and we would all want to be there and be part of that to celebrate, you know, what they're doing with that, so.
And I'd like to add to that, too, like I brought up before, that people that have served their terms, I think, need some special recognition if they've put in their 12 years
Yes.
to have something for them.
So, as part of this, too, we want to ask all the boards, commissions, authorities to have three measurable goals. Attend one city council meeting and be present during a business session. They get three minutes and no more than two groups, so that we can hear what they're doing just very quickly. Actively recruit new members and focus on increasing industry skills and diversity, as mentioned before. Post the dates, times, locations, and minutes of all the meetings online, which we know some of the software, if we were to go that route, would help with that. But until then, the help when people apply, that they know when the boards are actually meeting, I mean, those expectations, and then provide a written annual report at the end of each calendar year. What did you accomplish as a board or commission, so that we can understand the relevancy. All right, do we need to keep this board or commission going? If they're not doing anything, why are we doing, why would we keep them? So, Andrew, you want to end on this one?
Speaking of committees, we recommended a personnel committee, and the idea would be that that would be part of the review and make recommendations prior to the vote for applicants. Obviously, we would take in consideration everybody's information, but we would actually go out and make sure that we have, you know, if we're seeing that we need more people in whatever board, we could help to be more proactive about it. We'd just have some sort of mechanism in advance to work with the clerk's office. And then also, that that committee would be responsible for coordinating annual review of our council appointees, which we've talked about, to work with HR to draft a possible questionnaire and guidelines for what that review process would look like and bring it back to the council, just to get that process going, too.
So, we can chunk this, and this is something that can be addressed later. If we're not comfortable, we can talk about that further. It was just an idea that other councils have. I think Doug Portsmouth has a personnel committee in which they address a lot of localities through personnel committees, and they rotate the council members who serve on that, so that there's an opportunity that, you know, change the conversation if needed on that. But it did come up because of the council appointee issue and getting that organized and ready, if it is going to be done at a retreat, the two council members that would be assigned to that would help with coordinating all of that. So, we do have a survey. It is all the boards and commissions that we have, and we'd love for you the circle, eight of them, that you would be interested in, and then we can compile a list and then figure out if we are going to move to that liaison structure, including the mayor, he has to have some as well, that we would then be able to set that in place and know who we're responsible for, so that we can go ahead and already reach out to those chairs and let them know, hey, we're taking this new approach. I'm your liaison, I'm your person, and what can I do to help you, or I just want to stay in that communication. Here's my email, this is your email, let's stay in touch. And maybe attend a meeting if you have time and want to attend one of their meetings and meet the other members. And then being aware that there's, if there's an opening that's coming up, talking with the chair if they are going to recommend somebody, so that it's not just on Alan and Breck's office to be able to do this. Questions?
So, I think that, great job, good information. If each council member would take and do the tweaks that Andrea asked for, recommendationist tweaks, additions, deletions, and is there a timeline that you want the information back, Andrea, Tommy, or Alan?
I mean, we could talk about it at the next council meeting briefly, in terms of-
I think you made me a copy of it as well.
Yeah, Alan's working on it.
And the other thing also would be additions, additions. If, you know, we have made recommendations for three additions, how does that, how does that move forward with?
The three new commissions.
Should have had-
Well, that's part of, that's part of, that's part of what we're asking the council members to do. Pine on, on your recommendation and then get all the recommendations to Alan and Breck, and then they will come back and maybe we can come back with another presentation, and then after that, I think.
So, you want this on your work session agenda for the 10th?
When is the next work session?
You got 10th and 24th.
We'll have a council meeting.
Yeah, indeed. So, that's tonight, and then you mean your first meeting in November, which for the record is election night.
It is.
Are we, are we working that day?
It is a half-day if I recall. We're working at the polls, aren't we?
Yeah, I am. I won't be here that day, I'll tell you right now.
Yeah, so. Angela, what are you seeing? Talk up.
Well, I recall being here on election day. I recall being here on Barack Obama election day, but as council member in council session, but that's a whole nother, anyway. The only thing that I don't completely agree with in the Personnel Committee is the recommendation piece for boards and commissions. I think we're all capable of reading the information and making recommendations and all that, but past that, I like the ideas.
So, we're going to get all the, get the input, and, I'm sorry, Martin?
Sorry, very briefly, can we get the copy of the presentation so we can view it?
Mark it up.
It's in the Dropbox. It should have been, it was in there earlier today.
Okay.
Get your hard copies.
I think it was. Was it in the Dropbox?
Get it back in.
And then, yes, if, I mean, this isn't due tonight before you leave. If you have it, that's great, but if you want to take time to actually read about some of these, because there's some on there that we didn't know. And I did want to say, too, some of the recommendations were done, was it Christine Morris, when she first came on board, I think, at a retreat, recommended to kill all these commissions and boards, and council then said no. So, we pared it down some. It's, most of the ones that are being recommended are the ones, and if the civic facilities commission's not needed, I mean, you don't want that, we can leave that. That was just on that original list.
All right.
So, don't want Christine out of the bunch.
No, no, I know. She was doing what she was told to do, so, at that time.
We'll get all the recommendations and tweaks and-
Actually, don't have the first committee, the first group.
You guys repealed.
That's the one that if somebody bites, a dog bites, uh-
Yeah, okay. So, you know, the other thing was, is the recommendation to have an event in January.
I was looking to the mayor briefly about it.
And then, but at that time, if we were to have such an event, we would also have some sort of information. We'd like to be able to talk to the boards and commissions then and say, this is what we'd like for you to do going forward. Set your three goals, come to a council meeting, have an annual report, help us increase our diversity. We'd make a small presentation at that thank you event.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, a little direction here, mixed on the 7th of November, you know, this is our sort of work session. Do you want to have that or not have that on election, that be election night, not a business meeting?
Well, we'll wait, we'll just still hold on that. Mr. Riddick, I know it's working. I think I'm working, you're working, but I think we're working. We'll-
Well, we have to advertise it if we do, so.
Right, so we'll wait. We'll advertise it if we do.
We have to.
Have we advertised it yet?
We're having 30 days out, right? We don't have to.
I think we've attended to our notice obligations, but if you were going to cancel it, you'd have to take that vote, and you have next Tuesday's meeting to decide by then.
We'll decide by then.
Okay.
And then, do we bring in this conversation back?
Yes, we're going to give information, give information from-
The 24th?
If the members have made their recommendations by next week, then we can, we can take it up.
Just helps me build the work session.
I would recommend the 10th. I'm going to be out of town on the 24th, so.
All right, we'll bring it on the 10th.
Possible. We'll try and keep it consolidated.
All right, so then, I got it. So, Mayor, we got two items for closed.
All right, I got one item, Mr. Daltry has one resolution he would like to, this is a resolution, we have to witness McClellan to the HR team board. A resolution appointing Andrea P. McClellan to the Transportation District Commissioner Hampton Roads for a certain term. Adopt the resolution, Ms. Graves.
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Okay, let me read the resolution in closed session. Vernon, you don't need your legal-
I do not.
I'm with the members of council assembled and closed meeting on October 3, 2017 at 6:30 PM. For the purposes set out in Clause 1 of Subsection 8, Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, that is, discussion of candidates for appointment to city boards, commissions, and authorities. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.